Good morning. I'd like to call everybody back to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners' Budget Workshop. If we could go ahead and call the roll.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Floyd Huggins indicated to me that she will be running late.
Okay, thank you. We've called the meeting to order. Dr. Linker.
Good morning, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners, Ms. Gallards. Good to be here this morning. I'll walk you through our budget presentation. A lot of this is in the same format that you have seen over the last eight or nine years. So we'll go through this. Again, just wanted, first of all, just say thanks for all the support we've had over the last, at least in my span, almost nine years here in Pitt County. So I certainly appreciate that. I know the team does as well. As typical, we kind of break this down into a quick budget overview, fixed costs for salaries. That's, and we actually added a new line this year, which I'm sure will excite you. Fixed facilities cost increases just because of what we've seen in all of our worlds in the last year or two with the new money requests and then just the capital appropriations that we work on every year. So just going with our budget overview slide that we've shared that where we are in comparison to the rest of the states. You can see Pitt County is the green, where we are just slightly below the state average. We've closed that gap last year, in the last year or so. Our average daily membership, we've had some fluctuations in that, obviously, in the last two years. You can see, if you go way back, we'll start back at 15, 16, that's when they changed the age for kindergarten. You've heard me say that before. We had a charter school open in 16, 17. You can see we've come back from those. And then in the 1920, or the 2021 school year, we did have a drop. That was the, obviously, the beginning of COVID for us. Just like a lot of school districts, we lost anywhere from four to five percent of the students. You can see now we're coming back. Our projected enrollment for next year is above 23,600 going into next year. So we're kind of back where we were pre-COVID. Just, I know it's always been an interest for the commissioners on how our charter school funding looks. You can see, we did peak in 18, 19. Since then, that number has decreased every year over the last about four years. Just to look at those charter schools quickly, you can see where most of these charter school kids are going. Would just take a second, point out that the bottom two, we separate those because that's actually partnerships with us. So even though that looks like 140 charter school kids, you know, I sit on the board of both of those entities, you know, and the kids in the East U Community School will come back to us in sixth grade. And the students going to NERSBA are our kids through eighth grades. So we obviously want them to succeed. So we were actually, although we list them as charter schools, that really, we look at them as part of Pitt County. Just kind of a breakdown. This is actually what our proposed operating budget is for next year. You can see a breakdown of, it'd be about total of $49 million, a little over 49 million. County appropriations would be about 47 million. Rent agreement fines and forfeitures, the red light traffic violations, where other revenues add up to a little bit over 49, 49.7 million. How that breaks down is you can see there that the classroom teachers is 3.5 million. Your non-instructional support, which is our clerical staff, down, I won't read them all to you, facilities operations, 13 million. That's the biggest single entity in there. And then, of course, the teacher supplements, which we'll talk about in a little bit as well, is the second largest line item in our local budget. Keep moving. All right. Putting that all together, you can see as we break down our local budget, it's still about instructional programs is about 55 percent, and then support services is about 44 percent of the local budget. All right, now moving into just the increases of the ask, I guess. Fixed cost salary increases, 1.4, and this is all three of them together. I'll break all these down for you in just a moment. Fixed cost salary increases is a little over 1.46 million. Fixed facilities cost increases, 1.9, and then new money requests, 700,000, and that's teacher supplements. So we'll talk about that as well. Last year, when we started our budget and you, when you paid attention to the General Assembly, you know, the General Assembly put in a, last year's a $13 an hour minimum wage for employees. This year it's $15 an hour. If you look at the second line there, that's going to cost about 513 million and a half, $513,000 moving forward with that $15 an hour supplement. You can see that just a regular 2.5 increase for certified salaries. Another one to note is maybe the employee retirement rate. Have you noticed that number is now over 24 percent? That number is increasing over the last several years by multiple percentage points. So that number is going up a lot. Health benefits there has gone up another $338 per person, totaling over $111,000 to the local budget. The fixed facilities cost increases, this is the one we mentioned, is kind of a newer line item. It's because everything's gone up. You know, we used to just build this within our budget and we're able to kind of keep it going and just had to decide some years to do this or some years do that. This year, you can see just the, just the cost increases of everything is going up, almost 1.9 million. I broke it down for you. Just a couple of things, just general construction repair, low voltage has gone up like almost 264, 65 percent. Fire prevention, janitorial supplies, roads, grounds, you know, roofs. I know we've talked a lot about roofs in the last couple of years, and we're still going to be talking about roofs probably, but we're getting, we're getting, getting there. So that number's adding up to about 1.9 million additional costs. Then the only really new money request that's not really been pushed down to us either by the economy or the state is just the teacher supplement that we've talked about. You know, we've came to the county commissioners years ago and said our goal, we shared that our goal is to get upwards of 10 percent. We've moved from, when I got here, we were at five and a quarter, and we had a different plan for new teachers, and we got all them on board to about five and a quarter percent. We got everybody to six. Last year, we got to six and a half. Now we're asking to go to seven. That's, that $700,000 will take our teacher supplements to 7 percent. So that brings us that total there that you saw earlier, a $4 million total request for all three of those line items, for grand total of 47, just a little over 47 million. Just to show, when you look at the last five or six years, you can see that, you can see the years there, like 2016, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, where we were increased more than the base requirement. We're able to help our teachers and move those numbers forward. That's really what that's showing. Then capital appropriations. For several years, this was $750,000 about five years ago. The commissioners, thank you very much, raised that to a million dollars a year just for, just for straight capital appropriations for things you see there. Moving on to Article 40 and 42, you can see last year's request was a lot. That was 13, about 13 some million dollars. That was really because we came back and had to talk about CMFs when the commissioners gave us that $3 million to keep that project moving. We certainly appreciate that. Special projects, you're talking about cameras, bus cameras, inside cameras, additional roof, 4.7, 4.8 million was additional roofs. Remember, a lot of that was put in the lobs, which we didn't fund. So we funded it back through the Article 40, 42 funding. This year, that request is down to pretty much a normal request of about 1.5 million for Article 40, 42. Couple other areas that, just to keep you abreast of where we are, are, this is our local fund balance. You can see the blue line has continued to go up some. We'll talk about that in a second. The, that's the line items that actually, the money is actually geared or earmarked for something. It's going to be spent on something specific. The green line is the on-assign fund balance. You see, that's actually come down the last year. If I go to the next slide, we'll talk about the, just the fund balance as a whole. These are some items that are in the fund balance. A lot of that is the CMFs money because of the windows and things, projects are not done yet. And again, this fund balance is going back to last June 30th, or 31st, 30th. So over the course of this year, that, a lot of that money has been spent. The AG Cox Media Center, we've bought the books for that center. So that $200,000 is now been taken out. A lot of the instructional staff development money has been spent. So that, there's 5.8 million that's actually in the process, good, going to be spent, except of course, the red light camera money. That money is just, well, it's just there for now. We'll see where that ends up, okay? So again, that number keeps going up. So in one line, you're going to see the fund balance always going up until we figure out where we can and how we can use that money and when we can use that money. Okay? Just a couple other quick slides, just our locally paid positions. This is a slide we did start to include in here a couple of years ago. You can see where we are. There are administrators, just the total, the in total locally paid positions. You can see those have come down over the last five years by about a little over 20 positions. And I just highlight the fact that the teachers line that's gone from 51 to 40, that's really because the state has refunded, has reallocated the way they fund some teachers, and we'd be able to move a lot of those into state positions because they've given us some specific positions for encore teachers, your band and your orchestra, your PE position. So we able to move some local positions back into state over the last several years. SROs, we started really focusing on this a couple of years ago. We got some grants, but you can see that we do get a state grant for $400,000 every year. We use some federal funds. That is a two to one match. So we do have some federal funds to match it. We'll say that the state grant funds basically $40,000 for an SRO. If you know where you can find one for $40,000, please let me know. But, and again, the SROs we have are great, you know, but, and they're certainly worth more than $40,000. So we certainly fund that and take that seriously. Lastly, just appreciate what you do. And then take some questions if I can follow up on a few things for you.
I have one.
Mary.
Yours, non-certified staff such as cafeteria and that kind of work, where was it in this budget? I just want to know. And did they get a raise?
Yes, ma'am. Good.
Bus drivers too, that crowd.
Here, on this slide, you can see that, this is the second line, classified employees either got 2.5 percent or a $15 hour minimum increase, depending on which was the highest, because they had to get the $15 minimum. Now, what we have done is also, if you know anything about the public school budget, there were years it was flat and there were no raises given. So we had a, we had a, basically, a run through there through the class of about 15 years where if you came in as a first year employee or a 10th year employee, you were paid the same. We've actually gone back and fixed that. We've taken that whole compression. And thanks to my, my finance officer, Ms. Deborah Baggett here, she was able to fix that, where we actually have some steps built back in. Okay, so some people, if I, Ms. Baggett, are getting, some employees may get upwards of about 15 percent. Some of our employees may get upwards of 15 to meet that minimum threshold.
So we, they are at 15?
Yes, they will be starting June, or July 1st. Yes, ma'am.
That's the other one, ma'am.
And if, Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that as well, while you've got this slide up, to kind of tie it into what we talked about on my presentation Monday night, that $1.4 million request for all of that funding, those are included fully within your recommended budget. That 704,000 in new money for the new teacher supplement is covered fully in your recommended budget.
Oh, okay.
The 1.9 million in the repairs and those additional costs is where I shaved it down so that we could make the total overall budget a 6 percent increase year over year. So your question is, it's included in the, he answered your question that, yes, it's included within their requested budget. And I wanted to supplement to say, yes, it's included within the recommended budget as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments?
If I could also then just finish up. I think everyone knows Aaron Erickson. He's our facilities director and our assistant superintendent for facility operations, Matt Johnson. And of course-
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
-introduce, Ms. Baggett, our finance officer.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
It has been a pleasure working with their team, and so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, we're moving on. Where are the rest of you folks? Do you want to?
Can I go ahead and do your follow-up?
The reports.
Yes. Well, well.
Let me just go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I may, at this point, since we're ahead of schedule for Dr. Rouse's presentation, we'll go back to the follow-up items from yesterday. I have three things that I wanted to follow up with you all on, semi-related to yesterday's, and take this opportunity while we're together as a board. Yesterday, as a follow-up item, Commissioner Nonoli talked about in our comments, the convenience site contracts. So we did some research on that, and I just wanted to bring back what we found. We have two contracts for our convenience sites, the 14 different sites with two different providers. One is with Trust Denim, and the other is with a company called Management Support and Development Incorporated. Both contracts expire June 30th of this year. Our intent is to, in our normal course, to bid those out. And we did increase the line item for those contracted services in your recommended budget, the first time we prepared it, anticipating that there would be increased costs as a result of labor and other expenses in that item. So we included a 3 percent increase in your proposed fiscal year '22, '23 budget. And we can address and stress the importance of the concerns you've raised, Commissioner Nonoli, as we negotiate those contracts and work those through. And so it is, I would, although I don't have anything official to report, I would not assume that the existing contractors are willing to continue on for next year. And so we're exploring other options in that area and believe that we can accomplish your intent in next year's budget and have already increased that amount.
A question about that. Those convenience sites, they are not operated by ECVC though? That's privately-
They are not operated by ECVC right now. So they are operated by a company called Trust Denim. And I know you recall Jeff Savage used to be on this board. He is associated with that company. He has a number of the sites. And then there's a second private company, Management Support and Development Incorporated, and they run the remainder. And so we will know very shortly whether those providers are requesting renewal. I have some reason to believe potentially that Management Support and Development Incorporated may want to talk to us and may not be interested, or maybe. And so I don't have official word on that. Either way, the contracts expire and will be rebid, even though it's a service, given the dollar value. We have traditionally bid those out, and we can do that in our normal course. And I think the, the real follow-up concern is, have we, do we need to put more money into next year's budget to cover the types of increases that ECVC's asking for? And the answer is yes, and we have. There aren't any other questions on that. The second thing I wanted to talk about is somewhat related to your budget, but not directly, and that's the Sheriff's Office Patrol space. I was hoping on Monday evening to have had an answer for you on Sheriff's Office Patrol space. I do have a recommendation for you this morning, and I'd like the board, if we could, to act on it, if the board is so inclined to do so. We have, through Tim Corley's leadership and in cooperation with the Sheriff's Office, we have looked at a lot of different places to find the appropriate square footage configuration and price. Through some, I'm going to pat Tim Corley on the back for some great negotiating efforts. He has been able to bring the sheriff's first choice location to a price that we can afford. And so what I'm asking the board this morning is to give me authority to sign a letter of intent and ultimately a lease to lease space, which is currently located at 3001 Stantonsburg Road in Greenville. It was formerly occupied by Viden. It's owned by RHD Property Management LLC. The sheriff likes that space, and the, we were able to negotiate down the base rent contingent upon an annual payment rather than monthly. And so the monthly rent, we were able to reduce from 7,400 per month down to 6,600 per month for 7,200 square feet of space, which is more than what she currently has in her current space. We will have to pay some additional common area maintenance, tax and insurance expenses not to exceed 5 percent of that cost. And to take advantage of this discount by paying it annually, the finance office will work with me to effectuate a transfer from two lapsed salaries and positions that are not filled this current year to cover this cost and have that paid for in advance. So it will not have an impact on your proposed budget for next year. I think it's a real win-win. I spoke to the sheriff this morning at 8:00 about this recommendation. She is thrilled with it. I'm really pleased with what we've been able to do with the money, and I'm pleased with Brian's creative ability to find a way to take existing revenues and get this cost covered moving forward. So if the board is agreeable to that, I would like a motion that would authorize me to sign the letter of intent, enter into the lease, and effectuate the budget amendment process so that we can have this space as soon as possible.
Second, because I was really worried about the church situation. I really-
Yes, the Duffus Building.
And can you, can you just describe exactly where this is, this three thousand and one sentence for?
Yes. So it's, for those who've been here a long time, it used to be the Duffus and Associates Law Office, then Viden occupied it for a number of years. It is, if you come in off of 264 into Greenville, you'll see the new Walmart, it's not so new anymore, and a Speedway gas station. And then there are two small offices right there before you get to the Zaxby's on your left. And she would occupy, they're kind of twin buildings, and she would occupy one of those twin buildings.
Thanks.
I think it's a, I think it's a good win-win.
It's been moved in properly second.
And then the last, thank you. Do you need to say it past you next? So that passed.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then the last thing that I had, I will turn, which is a good news item, I'll turn over to Brian Burnett for just a short, good news item.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board. As part of the management recommended budget, you all saw Monday night that we like to value our employees. And we thought it was very fitting. We had some really good news this week as it relates to budget. And I wanted to take a little bit of, I guess, budget creator privilege to recognize one of our employees. And it makes me so happy to embarrass her in this meeting today. But our budget and grants analyst, Kelly Dixon, received word yesterday that she received the North Carolina Local Government Budget Association certification. She's now a certified budget officer. It's a title and honor that myself and our budget administrator Denise Ervinbo carry. So we understand both the difficulties of trying to get the certification and the joke amongst us, budget nerds, is capital budgeting is one of the roughest things you have to learn. And I believe she passed it with flying colors. So we, I just wanted to take a few seconds. I know we're running a little ahead to recognize Kelly for her effort in getting her certification.
Bravo.
All right. And then that's all that I have for your follow-up this morning. We're ready for Dr. Rouse. And if you want to take a short break, we can, is he on his way?
Somebody called him.
We've contacted him. Corley's doing that now.
Let's go ahead and take our break and then reconvene him when he comes back.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Rouse. We're ready when you are.
I'm glad you got here.
Yes, the red light cameras might show something that-
Y'all get right on that, somebody.
So- Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come before you to talk a little bit about our budget request. But one of the things I wanted to do this morning is really kind of give you a little update on Pitt Community College. But your finance person told me, so every minute I go over five minutes, they're going to deduct money. So I'm not sure if I should continue. But thank you for having me this morning. Let's see if I can get oriented here. So first of all, I just want to thank you again for your support with the Center for Student Advancement, the Eddie and Joe Allison Smith Center. It's coming along very well. We're about 35 percent complete on that. We're looking still to finish this up in January of '23. We've talked with the contractors. It appears that everything is on schedule. We were afraid that we might have some issues with supply chains, but they have done a wonderful job of getting supplies in early and storing it on-site. So we hope to invite you to a ribbon cutting in January of this facility. But allowing us to use some of our fund balance certainly has helped us with this. One of the things that we have started doing is engaging our adult learners in the community. We know that we're seeing a decline in our high school population as they graduate. So we decided what we wanted to do is re-engage adult learners aged 25 to 44. So we started an adult learner center. This has been partially funded by the NC State Belk Center through the John M. Belk Endowment. Back in the fall, you may have remembered, we did the Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair, which is one of the largest ones in eastern North Carolina. And the reason is bringing those adult learners back into the workforce and deciding if they could get some additional training. We certainly look at workforce development as one of the key priorities that we have for these adult learners. Also, we give resources for our adult learners that are not normally given to college students. Things like making sure that they have adequate food, make sure they have adequate transportation, as well as housing. So it's more of a way of supporting these learners while they're in college, and we use our community resources for that. We also, as those of you who attended our presentation on campus, we had the reentry program. It's going along very well. We're trying to advocate for those individuals who have been just as involved, may have been incarcerated, they're back in our community. How can we get them back into the community to be productive citizens, to have good jobs, and to be taxpayers? So we are very excited about this program. It's moving along very well. Since August, when we launched, we've had 179 individuals to be served by this program so far. So as you know, last year, you approved the Bulldog Promise, which is helping our high school students to have two years of community college if they meet certain criteria. We think this is a great program, and thank you for funding it. And I know you funded under workforce development, which is the right place because it is part of our workforce development pipeline. We also have the Technical Academy, in which we're working very closely with Superintendent Linker, to bring our students on campus for these various technical programs of heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electrical, industrial machinery, and so forth. So we're delighted to have that. We look forward to continuing to grow that program. Right now, we have about 80 students, but our goal is to do about 200 students, again, supplying the workforce that's needed in Pitt County. We also offer a few what we call short-term workforce training. We know that not everybody is going to come to Pitt to do a two-year associate- We know that not everybody is going to come to Pitt to do a two-year associate degree. So we have developed certain certificate programs in which they can go to work after completing four to five weeks of training. One is the BioWorks, because we have, of course, the biopharma job market out there. We have advanced manufacturing certificate, as well as commercial driver's license, which is very needed in the, in the job market now. And we also have put together mobile classroom. We have four mobile classrooms that will be online starting this spring, where we can actually take the training out into the community, to the job site, even to the public schools, to show students what they can do in the workforce. So, our facility needs the new welding buildings. I have to thank you for being very positive about funding this. We will have the concept available in the next week about this, as far as square footage and everything, and we'll certainly share it back with the county commissioners as to, you know, how that will look. We're also working for the Center for Workforce Development and Innovation. We're looking forward to at least getting a design on that and the concept coming up pretty soon. With that particular facility, we're looking at additional funding from outside, from various places, including the legislature. We're going to go to them for some additional funding, grants money, and so forth, so. But I appreciate your support with that. So legislatively, we have met with you, thank you for being on our campus. We had a wonderful time there, and I know that you, after seeing some things, you took immediate action, and we really appreciate that, and thank to the commissioners for that, who all attended. We're also working with our local, regional, state governments to say, here's some things here at Pitt Community College that we'd like for you to see, and for you to come and to work with us and to join us in making sure that we develop the workforce that's needed. So April was National Community College Month. Again, thank you for your proclamation. Once we did the proclamation, the town of Winterville said, hey, if they're going to do it from the county, we want to also do one. So we went the next Monday and got a proclamation from them as well. We held the town, excuse, we did a social media highlight, so we talked about Community College Month through our social media. We also held a town hall in which we talked about that, the importance of community colleges on April 14th. And of course, you may have seen the article in the Daily Reflector in which I wrote about the importance of community college and training. We also, last year, had a company called NZ to do a statewide economic impact study of community colleges. They found that community colleges have a $19 billion annual impact on the North Carolina economy, that's statewide. So you might want to say, well, what does Pitt do for Pitt County? Glad you asked. Wait a minute, oh, there it is. So in Pitt County, looking at, if you add our operational spending, our student spending, and alumni that have graduated from us, we impact the economy here to the tune of $228 million. So that's what comes back from your investment into Pitt Community College. So, and looking at this a different way, one out of every 25 jobs in Pitt County is supported by the activities of PCC and our students. 27, excuse me, 2,548 jobs are supported by our alumni. Operations, this is when we do an annual payroll and other spending, 57.8 million, and that's enough to buy 1,723 cars if they were available on the lot. And then student impact, students who come to Pitt Community College, a lot of them come from out of the county as well. They have a $10.8 billion impact on the local economy, or 311 jobs are supported through their impact. So after COVID, what have we learned? We've learned to be more flexible in our offering to students. We've learned that a lot of our students are struggling with day-to-day living, day-to-day barriers to getting to college. So we've adjusted to make sure that we have flexibility at Pitt Community College while still having academic integrity. And looking towards the future, we're looking at how can we better serve those students? The pandemic brought out a lot of weaknesses that we saw, so we're working on making those weaknesses stronger. And here it is, our budget request. So, our approved operating budget for '21, '22 was $6,253,326. We're asking for salary increase funds of $119,109. And again, a lot of this will go towards those who are making less than the minimum wage. We had to move it up to $13 an hour, but as of Jan, excuse me, July, we're going to move it up to $15 an hour. So this will help to cover that minimum wage. We just cannot, in good faith, have our employees who are making less than minimum wage. So this will at least bring up those that are making less to at least that level. We're also asking for a half a year of operations. Once we cut the ribbon on the Student Advancement Center, we will need the operation funds for that. That's the water, light, gas, everything that goes to operate that particular building. That's $61,750. So our addition is $180,859. So our total operation budget, $6,434,185. And we're asking for our normal capital outlay, which we get each year in the $100,000 range. So that brings our total request to $6,534,185. So with that, that's our request to the county commissioners to support Pitt Community College.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation on Pitt Community College. Dr. Rouse and his entire team have been such a pleasure to work with during this process. And as the board will recall, the recommended budget fully funds this request in total.
Thank you.
I'm happy to hear you say that you are raising your employee salary to $15 if those that belong, so.
Yeah, we feel that in good conscience. We're, we're training and educating individuals to go out and have a good living wage.
Right.
So we want our employees at least to at least meet the minimum, if not a little bit above that, so. Appreciate it.
I applaud that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, questions, directives than anybody would like to address before we recess for tomorrow?
I do have a concern. I know as we talk about budget, this is not a budget item, but when, when they come before us, it brings on other questions. And then when you read in the newspaper, you, that helps to bring on these other questions. And I read in the newspaper several days ago, maybe a couple of weeks ago, that there was an increase in suspension in our school system. So I was wondering if, if we could get the number of suspension per school and find out what the superintendent is working on to, to address that.
I can certainly get that information for you and bring that back for you. I will say that I know there are, have been some conversations about suspensions because when Sam Kroom, Kelly Andrews, and I visited the Bethel Youth Center in Bethel and met with Dr. Gary Moore, he was in conversation with, he shared that he was in conversation with Dr. Linker about different options on how his youth center could assist children who were in suspension status. And so I believe there is some ongoing conversation about suspensions. I'm sure I can get you those numbers and share them back with the board. I'm sorry?
It was the elementary that I was concerned about.
Okay, especially elementary school suspensions, okay. Yes, I believe that we should be able to get that information for you, since it doesn't directly impact your budget numbers. I won't make it an urgent request to have back by tomorrow, if that's okay with the board, but I will get that information and share it either at your next meeting or I'll put it in your weekly packet.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Any additional questions or concerns? If not, stand to recess until tomorrow morning at 8:30.